How many we got?
By the post office.
Tom, be here in just a minute. Here comes Mr. Douglas Caldwell.
Found the old drop slot in the wall that they had covered up with the nine one one sign.
Well, because he part of the, they're riding their bikes like crazy around.
Yeah, and we just got a brand new roof put over it last week.
I love it. It'll be nice. That'll really be easier for chips or something.
He has no free.
Better part of the accessibility.
So, well. Mr. Caldwell.
She, her name was on it too, so certainly it was. If you're giving me options now.
No, I'm buying heart. I was joking with him.
On the west side. It's funny. You got a nice street. I love how the sunshine.
All right, let's go ahead and call this session of the common council regular session October two thousand twenty five. Here for the city of Sullivan to order, and if you would all rise if you're able to face the flag and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Mr. Tucker, will you do roll call?
Mayor Wilson.
President.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Barnes. Councilmember Mayfield.
Present.
Councilmember Brown is not. Councilmember McClanahan.
Yes, I'm here.
Reese Garrett. Fire Robertson.
Dear.
And that's all of your people, isn't it?
That's it.
There you go.
Okay. If for some reason during this meeting that we lose YouTube and live stream, we'll stop the meeting and I'll go back there and reset it. But I'm gonna work on this to do a couple different other camera angles as we go through this tonight. So, all right. Roll call's been completed. Moving on. Minutes from the last meeting and special session.
I have, well, they both got done. I did not have all of the information I needed. I went back and watched. There they are. I went back and watched the special session and because I was not here for it, and some of it I just flat out couldn't do it, whether it's my hearing or the system or what. So, some of the information is not on this these minutes for the special session. I have gotten that information tonight from the mayor. So, do, what's your pleasure? Do you want me to go back and revise them and bring them back next month? That'll have the proper names and the ordinances and that kind of thing. Okay, so I will do that. So, we don't need to vote on those, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna hold off on the minutes from the two prior sessions until next month and capture all three of them at the same time. Okay, any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? I've got some notes here, so I'm gonna try to make sure we hit them all. We got. Okay. Halloween hours. Chris Eggie needs to be added to new business under item C with the VA. Sullivan County VA's office. New business. No, here's ordinance. Budget. Okay, that's. And I want to talk about that one, but it's not new business. I'll do it in the last comment section. Okay, so any deletions? I'll see any deletions. Any council? Have any additions or deletions, anything?
No.
Okay. Old business, moving on. It says ordinances, budget. Budget ordinance, I've talked to Corby today. He says the ordinance is, you guys don't have a copy of it, do you? So. If. You would. Second page of that one. Second page of this one. Second page, if you pass that down, Tom. Second page of that one and second page of this one is the ordinance. It's the budget ordinance. It tells you, you know, we had the public hearing last month. And now looking that over, it tells you all the budget there that will be submitted. If there's any questions or anything on it. We need to adopt it tonight. If there's. It's like this.
Yeah. So then to whom does one of these copies goes that has all this? Does it just go with the minutes or?
Yeah, just these signatures.
Okay.
Yeah, the signatures. If it's passed tonight. So, that's what I need to see. If there's a motion to pass this tonight. This is what we all talked about last month. Had the public hearing already on it and. Then if upon passing, then we'll sign the back of it. So, is there a motion to pass that budget for next year?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
When you do that, would you speak up?
Second. You're welcome. Second.
I understand. I mumble. So, Conference PC. It's the source. Tell me if this changes. Let's go. Now that ain't gonna work. I'll do this while you call.
Call the roll?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we, do we mark our box?
Congressman, Congress, Congress. I've elevated you tonight. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilmember McClanahan.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you want us to use this spare one to start signing it?
Yeah, if you'll sign.
You sign and pass it around.
Just sign one and then pass it. We'll all sign the same one. And here's your spare.
Okay.
There's those ordnance.
I've never seen a form like this.
Smile.
There's the podium camera.
It has to be middle of the toilet.
Yeah. See if I can do this again now. Okay, we're back on. Did you go around?
No.
Okay, so they're signing it past. That's why you guys are looking at me like that, like, come on, guys. What are you waiting on? Okay, we're rolling here. Old business has been handled. I don't hang on a second. Old business, those should be broken up. Ordnance, budget, and then item B should say salary ordinance. So, there's a salary ordinance that needs passed tonight. So, it's a twenty twenty six salary ordinance, establishing the. Amounts of pay and do you want to do that or is it the same way as I just did? It's gotta be the same. There's no, there's no. Raise for anyone this year. And so, it's the same as last year.
Thank you. I think. Sue is willing to adjust that. Before next meeting. Or does it have to be passed? Does that have to be passed tonight?
For the elected officials, it has to be by November is what Corby was saying. But the rest of it has until December.
Yeah.
So.
Sue asked us to look at this tonight and then say that at a special session, we will actually, because she's gonna double check.
Right.
Okay.
So, we're just looking at it.
Okay. So, there's nothing to be done to just reviewing it. Does everybody? I can get you a copy of it too.
There were a few things that she thought needed to be tweaked. Yes.
We've discussed this.
Yeah. That's what I thought was the final version is what I was to understand was. But yeah, okay, so council's gonna review the salary ordinance tonight and then have it at a special session. Does it need to be established now? When the special session's gonna be?
I think so.
Yeah, you have to have sort of a time.
I can get a copy of that. So, that should be done before November one.
Yeah. For elected officials, salary has to be by a certain time. And then the employee salaries have to be by December, end of the year. So. Okay, salary ordinance and a special session. What date you guys wanna look at?
When Scott gonna be back?
And Sue.
When Scott gonna be back?
I think he should be back next week, I think. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I thought he was gonna be back next week.
I think it doesn't have to be published ten days or something like that.
They should give enough time.
To be safe, not ten days.
So, that means a Friday paper. So, we'll have to.
This Friday's paper.
Well, that can be done. That's no problem.
Yeah. That it can be.
Can we wait till Scott is back and we can work with him on a date for the special session?
I just have a doctor's appointment on the twenty ninth.
Yeah, let's look at the week after next.
Thirty.
Thirty is good.
Yeah.
Thirty is a Thursday.
Right.
So.
Halloween Eve.
Yep.
Sorry.
What time you guys?
That would also allow for a ten day notice in the paper.
Ten AM.
Thirty.
I like that. Like the way you think.
Ten AM over there. I don't do too many, ten AM.
So, the thirtieth is what day of the week? Nine hours. Okay, announce paper this Friday. Okay.
I'll have to hand call the new statements. Get back to Patty.
Does the salary ordinance require a ten day notice in the newspaper?
That's what we're saying.
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
We're, we're gonna give it a ten day notice whether it does or not.
I don't think it does. I think it's like any other ordinance because you're just spending tax dollars. You're already gonna have.
It's gonna have one this time.
It's gonna have one this time, okay.
All right, so that takes care of the old business. Moving on to new business. I don't see Logan Brown here. Yeah.
Do the other people need to sign this even though they weren't there this evening? Or we just leave it like this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Logan Brown, it says renaming of street. I'm gonna give you a heads up on that. It's up in the north. State Street past Frank Street, up into the Nelson's area up in there. It's the last house. It's outside of the city limits. It turns from pavement road to gravel road there. And it's the last house on the right. He came in talking to Deanna and, you know, she pointed him here because he's wanting to rename that from Frank Street back to his house after his family members. I'm not gonna say which, I'll go ahead. Never like to assume, but I'll say mom and dad maybe have passed and he might wanna name it. He's gonna approach you guys about that if he does come in, but that's why it says that on there. Logan Brown renaming of street is for that up there. So, moving on, he's not here. Halloween hours. Council needs to pass Halloween hours this year. I have same as every year is what my suggestion and recommendation would be. Thursday, October thirtieth. And then Friday, October thirty first, from six to nine. They have, there's a small working group has already started a truck or treat with over thirty vehicles downtown Sullivan on the square. I have talked to him about leading a parade, starting here at the archway at six o'clock. Going around the square, coming back to City Hall and passing out some awards for costumes of, you know, certain age groups and trunk or treat. The trunks, you know, awards for best dressed up trunk.
That's on Thursday.
I think it's a costume contest for animals to, you know, come out, bring your dogs, cats, chickens on a leash, you know, everything on a leash and dress them up and walk in the parade around, you know, that kind of thing. So, my recommendation to keep it the same. I will say if Sullivan High School football wins the first game of sexuals, the next game of sexuals is October thirty first. I don't know where it's at or held at or anything. So. That's my recommendation. Is there a motion to accept that for October thirtieth and thirty first from six PM to nine PM here in the city of Sullivan? There a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember White.
Hi.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilmember McClanahan.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Welcome. Okay, so Halloween hours, and they heard you that time, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
Halloween hours have been established for the city of Sullivan and I'm going to do this right now and ask Mr. Eggie to step to the mic to address the council with what he's come here to address.
JB, do you see a sign on that for his?
Just gonna start off at six o'clock, right here from the archway and, you know, encourage everyone to come out, open up a trunk and. Look at all the costumes and.
It's cutting your head.
I'm gonna change it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're just gonna. Yeah, he's not gonna be on that one, so.
No.
There he goes. Thank you, Mr. Eggie.
There we go.
Go ahead and talk right there if you'd like to, not get through.
All right, so I'm Chris Eggie. One of the hats I wear is I'm the Sullivan County Veterans Service Officer, so I manage the Veterans Affairs Office for the county. We're relocating to the old nine one one building, which is behind the post office on State Street, thirty one South State Street to be exact. The roof was just renovated, so we're in the process of moving into that location. Hopefully, we're in there within the next four to six weeks. I'm here to request official designation of the one vehicle space on State Street directly in front of that building, which is. It's not, no parking on that side of the street. So, we designate a handicap because it's the ADA accessible spot for disabled veterans to get up to the sidewalk on both sides of the building. You guys can pass this around to where the square is on the map. And basically, if you park there, you can go on both sides of the curb there onto the sidewalk and access the building. So. Because the parking lot for the building can travel, so that's not. So, we'd like to, it'd be no cost to the city. We do the stripe and sign and all that stuff, so. Asking for the official designation.
Thank you for coming in here. Parking ordinance has to be amended upon passing if they choose to pass it. So, is there any questions for the VA that's rep here in Sullivan?
That's broad, right?
State Street.
State, that's right.
What's that street address, Chris, did you say?
It's right on top. Thirty one South State Street.
Yeah.
So, that needs an ordinance?
Yeah, there's a parking ordinance that has to be amended, add in that spot upon you guys passing.
Should it be amended prior to the vote?
No.
Doesn't have to be.
No, no, we don't. He's not gonna be moving in for a little bit anyway.
Right, right.
Yeah, we got time. So, is there any questions for him on this?
Not at all.
I'll get a tag and it's ready. Is there a motion to?
I will move to designate thirty one South State as a handicapped accessible parking area for the Veterans Affairs Office.
Is there a second?
Councilmember White. Councilmember Mayfield. Councilmember McClanahan.
Aye. What's that? Chris, the title of that building is the VA something?
It's the Sullivan County Veterans Service.
Sullivan County.
I don't like to call it the Veterans Affairs because we work for the county, not the federal VA, so.
Did I say VA? I said VA.
No, 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 no. People call it that and it's like, well, we're not the VA.
So, it's the office relocating out of the courthouse. When you walk in the east side, the first, right, we go through the metal detectors, the first office on your right.
Yep.
Is where he's currently staged at and that's, he's gonna be moving over there.
Yeah, that space in the courthouse, the courthouse security is gonna be able to use our office, which is a lot better for them. And then the coroner will be able to use their office. And so, it's a multi-win for everybody to move around. And that building's been sitting idle and empty since the jail and nine one one moved over there. So, we got a brand new, the county put a brand new roof on it last week. And so, we're excited to have better access for the veterans.
Do you know when this may be done? Like, you're still a ways away from moving in. It'd be after or before you move in or?
No, well, since you guys voted, I can order all the stuff from the planet. But no, I won't put it into effect until I hear from you guys on the ordinance. But my goal is, you know, by mid-November to be in there and operational, so.
Chris, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What I wanna know is, what are they gonna do with the old office at the courthouse?
The deputies are gonna move in there and use it.
Okay.
Yep.
You may have said that. I.
Yep.
Okay, great. What's gonna happen to their office?
The coroner, county coroner.
Oh, gotcha. Never mind, I'm with you now.
Yep.
Gotcha.
This would be a lot nicer for veterans. They don't have that long way up.
Well, and another thing for accessibility too is we have a certain percentage of veterans that. With mental health and things like that, that the courthouse is an intimidating building, you know, so, you know, they don't want to come and seek help because they have to come through security and come to that.
So, if they get out of their car and they've got the designated spot, they still have a curb to have to.
Nope, on both, on both sides of the curb, it is a driveway, so it just rolls right up onto the sidewalk.
All right, no other new business here tonight. I'm gonna look over my notes again. Moving on to department reports. Department reports, you have the Public Works Department report in your folder there. And you have the fire chief and police chief here tonight. You know, we discussed in the Board of Public Works about the new hire. I'm sure the police chief will update us on that. Plus, the fire will go. I know the dispatch is. I think didn't generate some reports. They weren't able to, so they don't really have anything, but they'll, paper wise to pass out, but we'll let the police chief go first. We got four, chief.
Like the mayor said, I don't have numbers, but he mentioned hiring the hiring. So, we did have a special session of the board of works three weeks ago, I think. Where we did an emergency hire and we hired somebody, sent him to perf testing and everything. And then, once we got the perf testing back, he told me he took a job with the Sheriff's Department. So, we are still looking for an officer to fill our third spot, so. So, we'll probably start advertising that soon. We're just working just to, we're just trying to cover as much as we can, so.
Any questions for the police chief? Fire chief, we got.
I don't have no numbers either. This Saturday, we got the fish fry coming up. Police Department will be helping as well. That'll start four, four PM to seven PM at the fairgrounds. We also have a employee that decided to take another job with another. Using his paramedic in another place. So, he will be leaving sometime in November after he gets his vacation time. Ryan Williams. Yeah, but he'll be leaving sometime in November before Thanksgiving, I believe it is, week or two before Thanksgiving. So. He's took a job with Harry Back, so. Other than that, that's, that's all I got for now.
It's closer to Thanksgiving, so.
The status of ambulance, you talked about that a few months back.
The, the billing?
No, to replace it or?
Oh. Yes, the billing.
The billing or are you talking about some else?
About the actual ambulance itself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Didn't you talk about?
So, yeah, so I haven't talked to him in a while. The last, we were told it's supposed to be by the end of the year. I've not called him and talked to him about when it's gonna be here yet.
Yeah, I just, it was curiosity.
I mean, if it's, if it's a point where we can't function it or whatever, it can, it can be, so it's somebody else, so.
You want to.
But now that I did bring it up, how is the billing?
Building company, it's supposed to start this spot still. It hasn't started yet. We're still getting a lot of stuff from the old billing to try to get everything switched over. And we're having the time with getting some numbers and things like that. Not, the billing company itself is getting everything to us that we need. It's just that we're trying to get things from Medicare, Medicaid, and all that stuff to be switched over. So. We're, we're still working on that. So, hopefully, we'll get it either in this month or next month to start it on it, so. I've been having phone calls with him about every, every week, so.
What's the name of the company we're going to?
EMC, that's something like that, yeah.
Did you get your question answered?
Yes.
Any other questions for the fire chief? Like you said, there's a fish fry this Friday night at the Elks, at the Elks, at the four H Fairgrounds from four to seven. Public Safety's putting it on. Half of, half of the proceeds would go to.
Is it Saturday?
Training.
Yeah.
It's Saturday.
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
Friday.
Saturday eighteenth. Saturday, the eighteenth from four to seven, Sullivan County Four H Fairgrounds. City of Sullivan Public Safety will be putting on a fish fry. The proceeds will go half to public safety and half to dyslexia awareness and training for the school. On top of that, Saturday, there is a Heart of Sullivan for golf outing at the Elks. That, all of that proceeds go to downtown Christmas, so wanted to mention that too. Lots coming up this Saturday. Stracey Utilities, like I said, Public Works Department has their sheet in your binder there. They're just working to, you know, you'll see the park winterize and close down. Button up some things for the fall season, the leaf machines getting ready to, you'll see a schedule go out on social media and, you know, those leaves will start falling over the next thirty to forty five days. Time changes and everything coming up. So, you know, they're, they're getting that out and preparing for that, preparing for the winter, you know. Getting salt and sand and all that staged. They've been working out the pool, closing it down, winterizing it, and just finishing up mowing. They've, they've been all over. So, you see that list there. They're all working as one team, so. Moving down after the department reports. Citizens present to address the council. Council comments.
I have a comment. On Wednesday, October twenty ninth, at the Civic Center, I believe it starts at five thirty, is the Sullivan County Community Foundation. And they are awarding twenty five thousand dollars to their fire department for a chest, Lucas device chest compression. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
And they are, have awarded the police department six thousand five hundred and forty eight dollars for the police car radar replacement. And it's a public event and everyone's welcome to attend the award program. It's just light hors d'oeuvres type thing. Anyway, congratulations.
Yeah, that's excellent news.
Five thirty at the Civic Center.
October twenty ninth, Wednesday.
Yes.
We always appreciate the Wall Bush Valley Community Foundation and all they do here in the Wall Bush Valley, you know, specifically Sullivan County and Sullivan itself. You know, Wall Bush Valley Community Foundation's been around for a while and, you know, they provide opportunities. So, on that too, you've seen, if you've seen social media for the city of Sullivan and some banners flying around. On that too, you've seen, if you've seen social media for the city of Sullivan and, uh, some banners flying around. The Wabash Valley Community Foundation and Lilly Gift Eight runs to the end of the year for every dollar you put towards a, uh, endowment, they'll, Lilly will match two. So, you know, they have their goals of a certain amount and they're not quite there at their goal yet, but we still have a few months to where if you wanna leave a lasting legacy and something impactful in your community where you're at, this is the way to do it. Long past a lifetime, it will still be around, you know, so, uh, it's a very, very good opportunity to match two for one, one dollar will get three dollars, so, uh, we can't, you know, be happier than Lilly Gift Eight's out there, runs to the end of the year, so, um, what, what a way to contribute. Anybody else have any comments up here? I know I have one, yeah.
Yeah, on my calendar, just to announce it.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, this, this is coming up. Taste of Sullivan is also, uh, uh, coming up to where there's a Saturday. Then I think it's Friday. Humane Society has an event that evening too at the Civic Center and then the taste is not until.
I think it's Friday the seventeenth, but I'm probably wrong.
Let me get on here and see. We don't wanna give.
I probably got it wrong. It's probably the twenty seventh. I don't know what, whatever it's, I think it's a week from Friday, whatever that is.
Our, up, Heart of Sullivan. And we will go Taste of Sullivan, October twenty third at six P M. They have fifty tickets left as of three hours ago, so about four thirty P M. today, they made a post that says we are done. I think it was supposed to say we are down to fifty tickets left for Taste of Sullivan on October twenty third from six to eight P M. Grab yours today before they are gone. Taste of Sullivan's a great event. Uh, the director, Daniel Levison's phenomenal and, uh, it's all the participants at the restaurants, uh, you know, throughout the county that come and, you know, give us that little taste and, and it really has been a good event for many years. So if you're wanting to participate in the Taste of Sullivan, you know, uh, contact Daniel Levison at Heart of Sullivan. But if you want a ticket, call and, uh, get your ticket now because they're running out of them and they have sold out in some past Taste of Sullivan events, so.
What time?
Six P M.
Six to eight.
Yeah, six to eight.
Twenty third, is that a Friday night then?
Thursday.
What night is it?
Thursday. Thursday, October twenty.
As we take a culinary journey through our beloved Sullivan County, tickets on sale now, so.
Exotic Fairbanks recipes and.
It's always good. If you leave there hungry, it's your own fault, cause there's lots of food.
Yeah, a lot of good restaurants, a lot of good, uh.
It's the original cobbler. The original cobbler.
And the fish sounds good on Saturday night too, the eighteenth, so everybody, uh, get ready for that. My last comment is this and, uh, it's, it's something I think we need to, you know, talk about over, over the next little while and, uh, maybe somehow figure out what needs to be done with it. E-bikes are taking over, right? E-bikes and they're everywhere. I think after this, uh, holiday season, we're gonna see them come springtime and summer, uh, they're just, we see so many of them and we've seen accidents happen on them. There's no really regulation of them, but I think there's needs to be something as in safety gear required. They're not a bicycle and they're not a motorcycle.
They're kind of a, kind of a mini moped.
In a way, yeah, and, uh, they can travel, some of them up to sixty miles an hour. And a lot of them travel at least thirty to forty miles an hour, even the, you know, smaller versions of them. And so I think we need to, you know, whether it's creating ordinance or just to put something out there about a lot of kids are wearing helmets with them. Two pulled up to my house last night and they had helmets on and I said, hey, that's, I, I just love seeing you guys think safety. We've had an accident in the past here where a kid has broken an arm, but some other communities have had some more severe accidents, so. I just think we need to start discussing on it and maybe create something to where, um, I don't know. Uh, but e-bikes, they're a good thing. I mean, I'm not gonna say they're not, but they are very fast and I just, you know.
They include scooters? I've seen a lot.
Gas powered scooters.
Maybe, cause they couldn't push them that hard.
They're fast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they're battery, they're all battery, electric bikes.
I've seen two or three stop signs run.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think especially when they wear their headphones or their nuts on, they can't hear sirens and.
Somebody was just looking out the door so here the other day and said, yeah, that e-bike just blew through the stop sign and it, I mean, it was just no cognizant of looking either way or no, you know.
We lived in Chicago, my daughter was, I know I've told Jeanie this story, my daughter Amy, who was my oldest daughter, she was probably nine, ten years old. She came home one day, she'd been on her bike and she was so upset and she was crying cause she thought she was really gonna get grounded or something. She got a ticket written to her by a police officer because she didn't stop at a stop sign on her bike.
Wow, yeah.
They ticketed her.
Yeah.
At that time, it was like a thirty-five dollar ticket. We were like, are you?
They're talking about a bicycle.
Bicycle, yes.
And now we got these.
Yes.
Yeah, so these e-bikes, it's something where we need to step out in front of it and, and I don't know what we can do, but let's talk about it still. Let's think about it, come back and, you know.
Do we have other communities that we can reach out to and see?
I'm gonna be at that AIM conference next week in French Lake. I gotta go, cause I gotta get my eye clip hours too, but I like to go anyways. Lot of information passed out there, but I will check into that and I'm sure somebody there, including the account, council for AIM will have some suggestion, I'm sure, cause it's come up. I've seen on the news a time or two where cities have complained about people riding them down sidewalks and pedestrians, pedestrians not being able to get out of the way, so it's, it's becoming, uh, more and more prevalent. I know I rented one when I was in Jacksonville last spring, really had fun on it, but I was doing all kinds of stuff I shouldn't have on that electric bike, I can tell you that. And they will go, they're zippy, so, uh, it's, it needs to have some safety regulation, not trying to prohibit, but yeah, so just some safety. I'll, I'll, I'll check into it and I bet I can come back with something.
Well, so. Also the pathways or the walkways or where they're gonna be
zip-zing.
Targets for those guys.
Yep. Yeah, so we asked these two also, the two chiefs to kind of think on it and brainstorm and ask your counterparts of other communities what they're looking at and whether, you know.
I'm not thinking these kids should be ticketed, but.
Right.
It makes you stop and think, you know.
Yeah, safety gear.
We were actually in Hoffman State, so in the Chicago area, but.
I think the ticket, the way that applies you, an underage person, nine or ten, anybody, you have to take it, take it then, but you really have to, the parents are typically responsible for juveniles misbehavior, if you wanna call it that, uh, that results in a safe penalty, a fine, so it's typically the, the guardian parent, parent or or who's ever head of household where they may be staying would be responsible to make sure that, that child acts accordingly to safety standards and comply with that ordinance, but that's typically how it works with the children, so.
I had about eight or nine boys stop at my house this evening and ring the doorbell. Two of them connected the doorbell, wanted to know if I had an old bike I'd like to get rid of. And I said, if I had an old one, I'd be happy to get rid of it, but I haven't had a bike at this house in probably forty years. But they were very polite and very nice and I, you know, made me start thinking, I remember, what was his name, Johnny?
Rogers.
Rogers. He always had bikes and things and I don't know, but one of them said that, well, his bike was in bad shape. And I thought, you know, it'd be nice if we had something, someplace like Johnny Rogers had where you could take a bike and get it fixed or.
Did they leave a number, Jean?
No, no, and they were all out in the drive and they all said, thank you ma'am. They were very nice and everyone, very nice and very polite.
Club thing going, twenty of them or so.
There was probably ten of them out there, but they were looking for an old bike.
And they had an e-bike in that group and the kid had a helmet on.
Is that right?
Yeah, if, I seen him over on Washington Street, so it's gotta be the same group.
Came to our house one time and Tom said, but he couldn't get over, there was seventeen of them and he said, not one cell phone. He's, not one kid was on a cell phone or messing with them.
They were all standing out there waiting for the two that came to the porch and, I mean, and they hollered back, so, you know, thank you ma'am, you know, they were just real nice. I don't know why they stopped at my house, but.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know what kind of bikes they're looking for, whether it's specific or just.
Oh, any bike, but one of them was having trouble with his bike and he was looking for a different bike. He thought maybe I might have one in my garage or something I wanted to get rid of.
Leon Smith was the old bike guy, wasn't he?
Well, he sold bikes. Johnny Rogers had a bike clubs and.
Oh.
He always rode it.
Bike parades.
Parade, yeah, in the parade, right.
Oh, we have four on there now. We've had two for a long time. Now we have four, uh, but, uh, you may, no, we just lost one. You may see a mayor's bike ride in the month of November. Uh, I'm gonna get ahold of this kid who put this club down together for a few weeks down at the park and ask him to help me, you know, drive this bike club. The school had one last year. Uh, it's where I'm gonna reach out to them. They had, you know, these guys were involved and things, so, um, we're looking, yeah. I've talked about Johnny Rogers this last week. I don't know if you guys were, you guys weren't in there. Uh, you weren't, okay, and they named another name. Can you remember it? The other name? I never heard of this name. But I remember Johnny Rogers in this parking lot at the elementary school and you'd have limbo on a bike, you, you know, do zigzags and I used to do all this, you'd get first place ribbon, second place and all this stuff. And, uh, they thought this other name was the one who put that on. I was like, no, this is Johnny Rogers. This was Johnny Rogers, so.
Well, you know, might be such a thing that's, if it's needed, maybe the city could kind of spearhead if people do have bikes in good shape, not broken and old, that could be maybe stored somewhere that the kids could come and see about getting a bike.
People leave bikes throughout the community, just on the side of the streets for a long time and I guarantee you, these two people could talk about it. From my seven years here, how much he's probably picked up, how much the street department's picked up and taken them down there and we'll, we'll keep them for a certain amount of time and try and.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I knew that that would happen a lot, but.
All that to.
You know, is there a way that we can connect those bikes to these kids that might need them?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know if they're sitting on any now down there. I mean, I don't know if they pick up any lately, but, uh, there's, there's just certain times where you'll just see bikes just sitting out at curbs.
Or even if you just put something out and said, you know, if you've got a good bike and we're not wanting jump, but if you've got a good bike, you don't want give us a call, we'll.
I think Cody picked one, picked one up the other day at the park that somebody left. Took it down to the street department, but I think that's about all the ones I know.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea at all, I mean, cause these kids are really gathering, uh, numbers and getting outside and, you know, enjoying the good weather.
Nice kids, just as polite and nice and friendly and.
Was Blake with them? Was Blake with them?
I don't know.
I wondered if that's why they stopped at your house.
I don't know, it could be. I don't know, I, it, I haven't seen Blake for a while. He could have been the big one out there waving at me.
Could have been. Blonde.
Uh-huh, I think so.
Yeah.
But I never thought about him, cause I never thought about him being in town.
Bicycle, yeah, yeah, that's right. Bikes can be called motorcycles, bikes and bicycles, but yeah, the mayor's bicycle ride.
Yeah, the mayor Terry Hope comes in and Jason always puts on a motorcycle.
Yeah.
Yep.
This is gonna be bicycle.
They had a bad accident.
Yeah, so that's, uh, what I wanted to bring up. That was my, any, any comments? Is there any other comments?
That's right, yes, that's right.
Aaron, now is there a motion to end this meeting adjourned? Yeah, I'm going to.